They're gonna leave it to you.
I'm just kind of here for support.
So this is basically the reason.
Obvious.
Right.
Thanks for that.
I've got it all done.
It is, well, it's really 13.
Tonight, well, tonight we're only doing, I guess.
These one? These one in the, um, county?
But this is a, this is something having gone to...
Right, right. And my guess is that they're good.
Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and open the meeting for the Pecosin Planning Commission Monday, September 16th. And we'll call the meeting to order, and our vice chair, Mr. Bill Travis, will offer our invocation and our pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Thank you, ma'am.
So if you'd like to join us, you're certainly invited to do so.
Thank you. Briefly, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together to discuss some very important topics here infecting our city, and we ask your guidance and blessing as we go about making decisions which may have lasting impact on our city. Beyond that, as always, we ask that your blessings and counsel for all of our men and women who are serving our country overseas, sometimes in very dangerous places, and again, this time of year for some of the people who are suffering from natural resource problems, such as in the Bahamas. We ask all this in your son's name. Amen. Join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Thank you, Bill. All right, first item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes, and we had a work session on August 19th. Does anyone have a motion to accept those minutes for the work session as written, or any corrections?
Make a motion to accept the work session minutes as written.
All right, and do I have a second?
Second.
Karen?
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner Dever?
Aye.
Commissioner Greve?
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett?
Abstain.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
I'm Karen Travis.
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of five.
Next item is for the regular session minutes. The regular session was held on August 19th, 2019. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes for that regular session as written?
Make a motion to accept.
I have a, I have a motion. Kevin in second, okay. Yeah. Kevin was, made the motion, I guess, and Greg, you second, okay. There we go.
Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett?
Abstain.
Commissioner Greve?
Abstain.
Commissioner Dever?
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of five.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, we'll move on to the audience for visitors, and at this time, if you have something to address the Planning Commission regarding anything other than the six public hearings that we have on our agenda, and if you do, we welcome you to come to the podium. Please give us your name and your address. This is other than the public hearing items.
I'm Mary Kay Weston. I live at 34 Pecosin River Drive. I am discussing legacy, but not the points, the six points, talking about it in general. In August 2015, the Planning Commission approved and sent on to council your recommendation to approve the master plan for legacy. You did this based on the recently revised zoning regulations for planned unit development mixed use, which you also had recommended for approval two years earlier, I believe. That master plan, wetland impact map, which my husband has, if you want to look at it, accompanying it were the basis of the city council approval and permit issued from the Army Corps and DEQ. The two site plans that were just submitted this year were supposed to provide the details of what was shown on the master plan. They did not. It is dramatically different. Instead, they had removed all of the apartments, commercial, retail, pool, clubhouse, open space other than protected wetlands, and an entrance and an exit, and is about one-third smaller than the approved Phase One that you, City Council, DEQ, and Army Corps all approved. It is not the same and should not be allowed to stand or re, stand in its place. Instead, they have substituted a substandard residential subdivision of townhouses and single-family homes for the planned unit development. Yet they're still claiming the right to have smaller lots, narrow 20-foot roads, and smaller setbacks of a PDU without having to follow Pecosin subdivision rules. I say the subdivision is substandard because it's not following your subdivision rules. According to Pecosin law, Section 8.4 on PUDs, these districts are intended to serve as neighborhoods integrating business, retail, cultural, recreational, and residential uses. Without the major elements, which they have eliminated in Phase One, what they have proposed is no longer a PUD. With these significant and substantial changes from the master plan, I request that you examine the revised site plan as a major amendment or a new submission. I believe you would normally do this with any other builder that substantially changed the character, the scope, and the size of the project, and that's what they have done. More problematic, there are no assurances, profers, or indications of when, or even if, the other phases of the development will ever be completed. In fact, there are indications that it won't ever be a PUD. No infrastructure is being built for the apartments, a commercial area. Instead, that land will be used for drainage requirements. For another example, only an eight-inch water pipe is going to be installed for the entire development. I don't know much about plumbing, but I know that's not adequate. After the first site plan was submitted, the staff sent a 10-page letter of concerns. The staff worked very hard going over all these details. While some issues were addressed, mainly the fact that they had dramatically undersized the BMPs, there was an apparent failure to even address all of the concerns of the staff before submitting the revised site plan with even new problems. Claims of financial problems to even build two-thirds of Phase One does not bode well. The developer is upset because it's costing him too much to fill our wetlands. The mitigation regulations go back to 2005. They knew what the property was and what the soil was like. They knew that stormwater management requirements for years. They knew there was strong environmental opposition to what they were doing. They should have known all the costs before proceeding. Their failure to plan and calculate properly should not have to be solved by the city of Pecosin. Even more telling, after the EDA meeting last week, I spoke to the developer to ask what Phase Two would consist of, and he replied, pretty much was shown on the master plan, the original one from 2015. When I asked about the rest of Phase One, he replied, they never had planned on building the apartments. They were land developers, not apartment developers, and he had no idea when they might be built. It is not a PUD. It should be resubmitted for approval under the subdivision requirements. It's up to you. I also have another comment. Mr. Horton was being kind when he said that the developer made a present offer to EDA. I'd like to read you exactly one sentence from that letter. It bothers me. It is not a profer. You can look in a law dictionary and find out what it is. I know what it is. As you are aware, these EDA-owned parcels are currently landlocked. If the city council approves our request for a buffer reduction in this area, we are willing to amend Phase Two of our plan and add an additional right-of-way to the EDA parcels, thus opening them up for development potential. In the law dictionary, you'll find it under the Bs. Any questions?
No, thank you. Anyone else like to come? And yes, we ask you to kind of steer away from the things that are on the public hearings and address things other than that, because that was sort of addressing some of these public hearings. So if anyone has anything else they'd like to come up and, in the audience for visitors... Okay, we'll close it. We will move on to the public hearings now. Okay, so the first one we have is consideration of the following items requested by the Big Woods Development Company, LLC regarding the legacy of Pecosin Plan Development. Pecosin Tax Map Parcels Number 17-1-22A, 18-1-121A, 27-1-1, 27-1-2, 27-1-4, 27-1-7, 27-1-8, 27-1-9A, 27-1-11, 27-1-12, 27-1-22A, 27-1-83, 27-1-84, 27-1-129A, 27-12-4, 27-1-5, 27-13-A, 27-13-B, zoned plan development, mixed use PUD, dash, multi-use.
Bonnie, I can't resist. Could you repeat that?
No, I can't. I'm lucky I got through that one time, Kevin. All right, the first public hearing item is a request for a profer amendment to change the timeline in which the community clubhouse and pool must be constructed from prior to the 80th single-family and/or townhome building permit to prior to the 147th single-family and/or townhome building permit. Phase One contains 146 townhomes and single-family homes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay.
This is the presentation for the profer amendment. Basically, just to refresh where we were in the work session, their current requirement is to build the clubhouse and the pool prior to the 80th building permit for either a townhome and/or really a single-family dwelling. So it includes both of them in the category. They would change that to prior to the 147th building permit for a townhome or a single-family dwelling residence. I think we covered a lot of this in the work session, but for those that weren't here and people at home just tuning in, the applicant did provide rationale for moving the profer, moving the, the building of the clubhouse and pool. Basically rested upon the fact that they will need to pay about a billion dollars in wetland fees in Phase Two, and presumably Phase Two is, is in the rear, but I'll get to that in a minute. Obviously, extending Legacy Boulevard would be another issue, as well as constructing the clubhouse and pool itself. So those are all, all reasons that are brought forth in the applicant's rationale. Staff has three major comments.
Excuse me, Wally.
Can't hear me. Oh, okay. Hello? Is it working now?
Now we can hear.
Okay. Got to speak directly into this sucker, don't it?
Sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, all right. Well, that restricts my movement, but that's okay. All right, so staff had three comments. Basically, the result of the profer amendment, if granted, will be to effectively postpone construction of the clubhouse and pool until a future phase of development. So that stands the reason. Phase One is 146 units. So obviously, it's going to be a fir, a future phase of the development. Depending on the order of site plan and/or development plan approvals, just pointing out, it could be a significant amount of time. Depends on what their timetable is, and I'm sure the applicant's going to speak to that. There is no timetable provided for construction of Phase Two or any phase incorporating townhome or single-family dwellings. And there is no, there is in fact no guarantee that Phase Two or any future phase will be built, although I believe the applicant would be losing a lot of money if they didn't build any other units. But, but nevertheless, that is, that is a point to be brought forth. Those are really the three things the staff want to say at this point. Madam Chairman, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to do our best to answer them.
Be here a while, so if we think up some questions, you'll be. All right, so I think probably unless somebody directly has a question they'd like to ask him at this point, we will begin the public hearing. Okay, we are going to open the public hearing on this item. If you want to address this particular item, please come to the podium now and give your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Lamont Myers. I'm the manager, A manager, of the Big Woods Development Company. We're the applicant. Madam Chair, would you like me to address all of these issues at once in the interest of time, or would you like me just to address each as it comes forward?
What is the directions of the...
I think it would be nice to have each as separately.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I think separately would help my brain a bit.
Okay. Clarify a little bit better.
Okay, I'll just, I'll be jumping around here on my prepared remarks a little bit. I would like, if I could, just take a moment before I start my prepared remarks and just address a couple of the questions that came up during the public information, public information session, because I think there is some confusion that perhaps I could help clear up here. There was talk about that the Phase One that we presented did not include commercial, did not include the apartments, and that we weren't going to build the apartments. That's, that's not accurate. The apartments themselves require a separate standalone site plan. And since we are land developers and we are not apartment builders, we are, we will be contracting with the, with an apartment builder who will actually be taking down that property, will be actually doing their own engineered site plan, so that will come in as a separate site plan. Same way with the commercial. The commercial would happen later. Typically, you'd, you would not build your commercial first. You need rooftops to support it. So the roof, so the commercial would come in later, and again, would also be, have a, have a site plan for itself. So that, that we had discussed with the staff. Staff's well aware of that, as to why that was, why that was done that way, because we don't, we would not be, we would not be building, we would be constructing the residential portion up first, and then the apartments would, they'll be handling, they would be handling their own site plan. The issue, so they're, they're not being used for stormwater retention, that's simply in, in, in error. The water line issue, that was, that is being addressed. There'll be two connections to, you have to have a loop system for a project to this size. We realize that, and it was not shown on the first plans because there was a, the loop road was not going to be finished initially because of some stormwater considerations. We've since resolved those, so, so that, that will be taken care of. So I just wanted to, I wanted to make that clear, and also, I think maybe it might be helpful to state that we're really not here tonight to relitigate the zoning case. We, you know, we went through this in 2015 and spent three, the last four years getting our wetland permits and, and actually getting to the point where we are now able to do the hard engineering, and when we do the hard engineering, that's when these, some of these, these issues come to, to bear, and so that's what brings us here this evening. So I just felt like it would be helpful to, to clarify perhaps some misunderstandings. With regard to the clubhouse and the pool, I mean, yes, we had, we had voluntarily initially said that we would do those, try to do those by, do those by the 80th building permit. And as our engineers fine-tuned the plans, it became apparent that we would have to construct most of the improvements within Phase One all at once. In other words, we can't build to the back with, for example, and I'm going to try to... Van of White couldn't be here, so John is stepping in for her. But we, in other, in other words, we can't really build this way, because when you're in, building in Phase One, it all has to be cleared, it all has to be masqueraded, it all has to be, and all your stormwater, thanks, just said that, all your stormwater has to be put in place. And what that does is, of course, that means you're incurring all of those costs upfront, and so you have your off-site costs, a lot of which will, will attribute to the entire project. We have a very deep sewer that's coming out of the pump station in front of the food line. We have major road improvements on Victory Boulevard, turn lane improvements that have to be constructed all of Phase One, which is, say, 146 lots, and we really are in the position where we, they, we have to realize more revenues from Phase One in order to go into Phase Two, because just the mere act of going into Phase Two, that triggers about another $3 million in cost. You have to, we have to purchase, we've already purchased all of our mitigation credits for Phase One. That's been done. We, when we go into Phase Two, we have to purchase all of the mitigation credits for Phase Two. And Phase Two, just for your example, basically, Phase One is this part of the project, Phase Two goes all the way back to the point, and then this area up here is Phase Three. So once we do that, if we, we have to purchase all the wetland mitigation credits, that's about a million dollars. The pool and clubhouse could be over, around a million dollars. And then also, in order to save as many wetlands as we could, we, we single-fronted Victory Boulevard, I mean, Legacy Boulevard, where for this area, there's expensive road and lots on only one side. So what happens, once you go into Phase Two, you've triggered right there, in addition to all the land costs, we bought, we bought all the land in Phase Two, we bought all the land in Phase Three. So what that does is, it can, it can put you with a very difficult, very difficult to sustain debt load as you go forward without being able to realize more of the, of the revenues from Phase One. So simply, that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to extend the timeframe so that we are able to utilize more of those Phase One revenues to go into Phase Two. There has been a question, you know, will we ever build Phase Two? I can tell you, if we don't ever build Phase Two, we're going to be in pretty bad shape because we don't make any money in Phase One. So you really, on all of these development projects, they're developed in phases, you submit your construction plan in phases, and you don't really make any money till the end anyway, because all the time up there, you're simply paying down debt and just trying to get, you know, get your construction done. So if Phase, Phase Two and Three have to be built for this project to be viable. If we were not, if we did not intend to build them, we would not have bought all the property. We would not have permitted everything. It's simply, financially, it's just, would be impossible to make this project work without Phase Two and Phase Three. We're just looking for some, some help, I guess, if you would, to, to give us a little more time. That doesn't mean we're going to wait until the 147th building permit. We may in fact be in a position, sales strong, we may be able to go in and do that sooner. We'd like to do it sooner. We would just like that flexibility to be able to respond to the market. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
I have a question. Is this the company's first?
No, ma'am, it's not.
Okay, how, how many other projects have you...
Well, we did two, we did two projects very similar. We did another project that we're in York County called Whittaker's Mill, which is a planned development residential. It has been the fastest-selling project on the peninsula. It is the second fastest-selling project in all of Hampton Roads. It's a very complicated project, and we tried to learn from some of that, honestly. We started those two projects at roughly the same time. Had we not gone through this three-year process on our wetland permit, we would probably be at the same phase that that project is, which is basically 70% sold out. So yeah, we have experience doing it. We are also trying to do lessons learned, because in that project, we learned the, we learned the ramifications of piling on so much debt at the beginning of the project. So we're trying to learn from that as well.
Just a question, and I guess my question is, do you have any just hard assurances that, that if we do recommend that the clubhouse be postponed, that it will indeed be built? Are there any assurances that you can give the city for that?
Well, it has to be built to be compliant. If Phase Two comes in, and we have a development plan with Phase Two that does not have the recreational amenities that are called for in the master plan, it's not an approvable plan. So the city has that, though, you know, and we need it for the community. When you, when you build into a community and people, and, and, you know, we may find that we, we may try to accelerate it if we can, because, you know, you don't go out and sell people and say, this is going to be there, and then not build it. We don't do that. We don't do business that way. We've never done business that way.
I see the, I see the advantages from, from your, your point of view. What are the disadvantages of, saying, you know, waiting until the 190th house is built or the permit is...
Disadvantages to us, to the city, to the residents?
To anybody.
To the, to the city, I don't really see it being really, frankly, neither here nor there, honestly. To us, you've heard certainly what it means to us. The only potential thing downside I could think being, you know, would be some of the people who have moved in want to see it there sooner so they can use it sooner. So that's really what it boils down to, and marketing will drive that as well, too. But in terms of the city's standpoint, or the neighbors' standpoint, people who are not a part of legacy, it's very difficult for me to see how it would make any difference whatsoever, frankly.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
I would like to know, Lamont, what type of, of price ranges are y'all looking at? I, I don't know that this is pertaining to that, but just for curiosity.
Well, we...
Because I know that the buying public, they like to see what the amenities are, and that's a huge selling point. And I know in Whittaker's Mill, all of that was built up front, I believe.
It was.
And as you stated, that is a, I believe it's actually sold out at this point.
Well, we still have, we still have a, we still have another section in the back we're finishing, and then a few more townhouses we're adding.
I guess I'm just kind of wondering, is that going to have effect on your marketability in that area? What kind of values are you going to be looking at in terms of townhouse and single-family prices? Just wondering how that's going to relate to people buying, not seeing any of the amenities, not really being able to visually look at them. I think that's been a, I know in Whittaker's Mill, I've personally been in that neighborhood, and I know that if you pull in, it's very visually effective to pull in and see this beautiful clubhouse, or that sort of thing. And I just wonder, you know, are people going to be skeptical, well, we still haven't seen it yet? I don't know. I'm just wondering how that would affect your marketability.
Well, we certainly hope it will not affect the marketability. I can't say how it will or won't. With regard to the, to the value of the homes, I think it would be very similar to where we are at Whittaker's Mill. We, we're trying there to have a wide range of product offerings, and that's one of the things that will speak to the public hearing with regard to the additional townhome unit styles that we're, you know, we're seeking approval on. We're trying to appeal to as broad of a market as possible. We want to have, we want to have something for everyone. So our towns in Whittaker's Mill start in the low to mid-twos, our singles go up into the low fives, and that seems to be, the market seems to pretty well cover the waterfront. We have a very, very great, very diverse, very exciting community there. It's really, it's, it's, I love going there because I'm able to see, I love to watch the kids get off a school bus and know that's going to be their home. So we're, we think it would, in terms of, of market profile... that's gonna be their home. And so we're, um, we think it, in terms of, of market profile, it will be very similar to Whittaker's Mill.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr.-
Okay, so. Talk about this among the commission. Oh, well, I'm sorry, I haven't closed yet. Come up. Distracted. Come up. Give us your name. Sorry about that.
Name is Bob Weston, thirty-four, Pecosa River Drive. And I'm concerned about the passage of this giving yet another disincentive for the developer to continue on to phases two and three. As an example of it, um, from the developer's own drawings from three years ago, phase one, as it's shown on here, did include the apartments and did include the, the residential development. And based on that, I did a, an initial assessment of the stormwater management plan and found out that it was considerably undersized. We made that known to them, and they have made some accommodations by increasing the size of the retention ponds. And, um, in the latest revision, even added yet another retention pond over where the overflow parking would have been for the apartment complex. One of the things that caused me concern, though, in the revised plan is that they added, um, to help with the stormwater, uh, management plan, added some level spreaders, um, that actually, um, release water, stormwater excess flow into the area that would have been built for the apartments. And so there's actually infrastructure that's planned to be built that actually will put water, stormwater, excess water into the apartment complex area. If that is to ever be developed in the future, that would need to be undone, some, um, stormwater management plans put into effect for their revised phase one, as well as put in a lot more stormwater, uh, treatment for the apartment area. By not having that in the plan now, that itself is a disincentive for ever doing the apartments. And in addition, when those are put in, the stormwater, they will need to have some piping that drains that stormwater flow into Oxford Run. There's, it's gotta go somewhere, and it's gonna go to, into Oxford Run. There are no plans to have any of that piping put in to phase one now, as it currently stands. And so if it's to be done in the future, if the apartments are gonna be done, they will have to, um, demolish and reconstruct a substantial amount of the infrastructure in revised phase one to be able to handle that. And that's a disincentive for them to develop it. Um, this just provides one more disincentive for them to, to do it in a timely manner of the other developments, and frankly, may happen way off into the future if ever. And that's my concern about giving them this extra time. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Have any of your glasses? Somebody's glasses? Looking for your glasses?
I'm Randy Trestrel. I live at two twelve Beach Road. Um, I have, I am well aware that this developer has a valid permit from the Army Corps, valid, full force, even with modifications. But these modifications do not seem minor to me. Um, it is my intention, and I am in the process of formally requesting of the DEQ, um, and the Army Corps and the State Water Board to look at all of these changes. Because under the Virginia State Water Control Law and implementing regulations, the proposed changes that the Big Woods have put forward are not likely minor. Thus may require separate permitting before the State Water Board under Virginia Code Section two five, two ten, one eight E. Given the uncertainties with permitting before Water Board, it may make sense for the Planning Commission to postpone any actions on the Big Woods tonight. That is, the Planning Commission should allow the DEQ and the Water Board and the Army Corps to look at these modifications. The proposed modifications threaten to increase the amount of wetlands destroyed by the project and threaten to worse the water quality. These reductions could exacerbate pollution runoff to the adjacent streams. Furthermore, it should trouble the DEQ, the Water Board, that the developer initially came forward with a controversial project, and won approval for that project as a least environmentally damaging practical alternative. And is now coming back and asking, and wants to actually build a more environmentally damaging project. The requests for modifications like these need to be closely scrutinized to make sure that the developer is not gaming the system. So again, I request that you postpone any decisions about these buffers tonight. For, and I just want more, one more comment about the, um, the first request. I hope you have in your conversation what compels, you know, or ask the question, what compels the developer to build the subsequent phases of the project? You know, just that we're gonna do it is not, you know, it's not adequate. You, as business people, know that, and it has to be in writing, or something financially or legally compelling them to do so.
Like to come and speak on this one, too?
Hi, I'm Natalie Canella, and I live at eighty-four Road Drive in Pecosa. I'm here today to express my opposition to several items requested for the Legacy project. For item one, I oppose the request to nearly double the requirement when the developer will construct community facilities. The types of the community facilities and when they're constructed were key components that the developer marketed to the Planning Commission and what the City Council subsequently approved. This aspect of the project was recognized by both parties as being essential to attract buyers to the new residential community. Delaying the execution of these elements will likely negatively impact attracting buyers and selling units, which will ultimately delay the promise and commitment to become a tax generator for the city of Pecosa. For items two through six, I oppose the multiple request to reduce the perimeter buffer ordinance from forty feet to ten feet or to five feet depending on the area. The City Council previously approved reductions to the perimeter buffer ordinances, even with opposition voiced by Pecosa's citizens. This included approving the Victory Boulevard reduction in twenty fifteen from sixty feet to twenty-five feet, which provided the builder with over one acre of additional buildable property at that time. Now the developer is requesting to further shrink the buffer on Victory Boulevard to five feet, area three, for commercial parking. Further reductions to the buffer requirements would negatively impact the environment. It would not be prudent development decisions for the city. In addition, the developer has not supported that the city's ordinances have created a true and valid hardship to warrant such waivers. Finally, the requested variances are not warranted simply due to the developer's assertion of higher than anticipated cost of the project and hopes to gain more buildable land to offset or recoup these costs. Again, the developer's desire to gain additional buildable property by further shrinking the perimeters does not establish or warrant relaxing the ordinances that are in place to protect the environment, surrounding properties, and the citizens. Consistency and orderly development of the locality are of the utmost importance to what our Planning Commission is asked to do for the city. I also understand the importance to maintain consistency and the commission's advisory role to the city to approve similar variances on a reoccurring basis because of the need to maintain consistency. The variances are applied consistently to protect the locality and its environment. Prior decisions validated the need for consistent buffers and was recommended by the Planning Commission for the brick kiln in twenty sixteen to maintain a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer and to meet all other required setbacks. At another Planning Commission meeting in twenty sixteen, the members unanimously recommended that the City Council deny the subdivision ordinance, variance, as no undue hardships were validated. I wanna highlight just two data points from the Pecosa's citizen survey in twenty sixteen. The preponderance of Pecosa's citizens indicated, one, that it was more important to preserve trees and open space than it is to have more development. And, two, Pecosa needs stricter limits on paving and other development activities that increase stormwater runoff. Approving the drastically reduced buffers not only goes against the reasons for the ordinances in the first place, such action would go directly against key areas of importance voiced by the citizens of Pecosa. The city's ordinances are not impacting the developer from achieving the project objectives and moving forward to begin construction on this residential community. On the contrary, further relaxing the ordinances will create long-term negative impacts for the city and puts the interests of the developers ahead of the city's interest. The City Council has already relaxed its ordinance for this project after the conceptual plan was submitted. The council committed to stay within the boundaries of the plan, and the developer has promised to stay true to the master plan. Changes are often needed and required for a project of this magnitude. However, the developer has not justified that the city's ordinances are causing a true hardship that would stop the developer from continuing as normal and being successful. In addition, the ordinances are there for many reasons associated with safety, protecting surrounding properties, and for logistical and logical development. Granted, the additional variances would be inconsistent with prior Planning Commission, City Council decisions, the city of Pecosa's comprehensive plan, and the Pecosa's city survey conducted in twenty seventeen. Please consider in your, in your deliberations that our Planning Commission and the City Council are not responsible to approve changes to assist companies with their expenditures. Fluctuations in construction materials, delays in project milestones, et cetera, are common for any construction project. So I'm confident that a company with the broad experience and capabilities of Mid-Atlantic and the Big Woods Development would have considered these elements and associated contingencies in its planning and its estimating. These also include fluctuations and efficiencies that may be gained over the life of the project as well. I believe the city of Pecosa should work in partnership with its developers. However, that does not mean relaxing important ordinances that would negatively impact the locality. I did have one quick question for the developer. Um, since you purchased the extra parcels of the land right beside your own development property, which then landlocked the EDAs properties, why don't you use your own extra parcels to make up the number of houses that you're deficient? Since you're asking for all these extra buffers and waivers and additions to the master plan, why wouldn't that be a feasible option? I've never really heard of a developer, ever, especially one that's this lucrative and experienced, to not understand that they would have to abide by required city buffers. They are very well knowledgeable in this area. And as far as the code of ordinances go for the city, it's eight-point-four dash five, perimeter buffers and open space. A forty-foot-wide landscape of naturally wooded buffer shall be maintained around the perimeter of the project area and can be included in the open space. Now, we are all pretty smart people here, okay? And I don't know if they're using the word request a buffer modification, or ordinance acceptability, or what their verbiage is going to be. But if they get that land from forty feet down to ten feet, we know that there's gonna be a building right up to that line, and then we're, we're not even using our own ordinances to keep it fair and equitable for everybody else. Just my thoughts. I hope you consider them. Thank you.
All right, it isn't. All right. Got somebody else coming?
Hi, I'm Albert White. I live at fifty-five Rens Road, and my family also owns property up here in Pecosa, adjacent to this property. Um, I'm surprised there's no one here from the Villas, which was a good project, very good project. I don't see anyone here that I know from Hunts Woods. And again, when my property, not my property, my family's property gets developed, you know, we're gonna try to make it, as we've always had, um, a good development, that, that, not that we've developed property, but maintain good character property for the people who live here in Pecosa. There are plenty of people who live in Pecosa and, and the Villas specifically. And I'm sure when I develop, we develop, or whoever develops our property, they're, they're not gonna want to have the buffers modified where there's five foot from my property line to their backyard. And I don't think you would either. And I think we, we can do better. I didn't come having done my homework like these other presenters have. And I'm, you know, what, what I say may not be listened to. But I did see that plan earlier last week, and I'm, I'm with them. We didn't do our homework. We didn't do our homework in, in putting all of this down unless it's a dog and pony show, and we, we're gonna get lost in it. But, uh, I hope y'all will look at the facts and look at where the city is going and make a decision that's in the best interest of, uh, Pecosa. A hundred and forty-six homes and all the traffic is heading out here to Victory Boulevard? I mean, it took ten minutes for me to get home from seventeen, co- coming down today. So, uh, please give some consideration. And I've checked with VDOT. Maybe, maybe they've changed their mind, but there's nothing in their planning right now to widen Victory Boulevard in a five-year plan or a six-year plan. So I know you've got specific areas here, and I'm glad to make this comment, because I don't think I could stand waiting around to hear all six of these heard separately. And I think everybody here may have some of the same considerations and thoughts about it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm John Foden, and I live at One Barrel Factory Court in Lawson Farms. Good evening. My wife and I are eleven-year residents of Pecosa. We chose to make Pecosa our home as we served our final tour of duty at Fort Monroe at the end of our twenty-five year Air Force career. Our two children made many friends and graduated from Pecosa High School in the past several years. Over the past few years, I attended a couple of City Council meetings and addressed, that addressed the Legacy of Pecosa project, most recently the EDA meeting, uh, this past week. Unfortunately, I didn't realize the Legacy project even existed until the past couple of years during the campaign to bring the Walmart market to Pecosa, long after Legacy had been approved. I realized I was late to the issue as City Council approved the Legacy project in two thousand and fifteen. However, I want to be part of the call that invests the effort necessary to voice my opposition to Legacy's recent proposal to reduce the buffer distances throughout its project. I realize Legacy is already a done deal. Pecosa is going to lose its Big Woods and a hundred-and-one acres of beautiful natural green space. However, I and many Pecosa's residents who share my view vehemently disagree with approving its recent proposal to reduce the buffer distances within some zones which may further encroach on the Big Woods. The city should not support the developer, the developer's proposal so more lots can be developed. The developer failed to complete a sufficiently thorough assessment in preparing its final proposal to the city. We're well aware Pecosa is already losing significant amounts of its wetland and natural green spaces with the Legacies, with Legacy's original approved plan. We simply cannot afford to lose any more of that green space as a result of incomplete preparation. Even though I'm only a recently arrived move-in, my wife and I have grown to love Pecosa in spite of hurricane seasons and with its many positives. One of Pecosa's great strengths is its natural beauty. The Big Woods wetlands is one of my favorite places to visit because of its walking trails and the wildlife that we know inhabits it. Where would that wildlife go? No other town on the peninsula can boast such a wonder as the Big Woods. Let's at least safeguard what green space may remain in the Big Woods after Legacy is built. Disapprove the developer's request to reduce the distance of the already approved buffers. Thank you. Thank you for your consideration, for our recommendation, and many of the Pecosa's residents, including the move-ins, including the move-ins, as well as families who have for generations called this city home. We wanna keep Pecosa green. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, my name is Buddy Spencer. I'm a, a member of the Big Woods Development Partners, uh- I was 67 years old then, and I'm 74 years old now, getting pretty old to even want to undertake this venture, one way or the other. However, the concept came together because the city council and the family, and the city fathers and the city realized that there are certain needs that the city has, not only for the present time now, but going into the future. And they know there's a limited amount of land left in the property for that, in the city for that kind of development. They looked at the Big Woods and said, hey, we've got this big piece of property here. We've got 20-some property owners. How can we put this together and make this into a special planned unit community that will provide opportunities not only for, not only for 2013, but for 2040, 2050, and whatever? The idea there was that we've got to utilize the limited property in the town that has elevation, land elevations in excess that don't require flood insurance and on Victory Boulevard where there's great access to get to the property. We were fortunate enough to be asked to come down and talk to the 22 property owners, and they were great families, the families that owned this property for decades in many cases. We were fortunate enough to be asked to come down and talk to them and try to put them together. We had wonderful conversations with all of them. They've stood with this process all the way through for an extended period of time. We did, we have closed on the property now, with the exception of one parcel in Phase 1, and we want to look after those property owners. It is, it's been an honor working with the property owners. It's been an honor working with the planning commission, the planning staff, and the city council, trying to formulate a community that would be an upgrade community that would be an asset to, not only to the residents of Legacy, but also for residents of Pecosa and a source of pride. It's very important that we, these buffer requests that we ask for, is important because it does impact the overall quality of what's going to be developed ahead. We are committed to do something that will be proud of, as well as the entire city will be proud of. Without the buffers, which we did not know were part of the approval process until after the fact, it's going to require the lots to be, if not to losing lots, it's going to require smaller lots to be developed. When you have smaller lots, what you have on the front of the lot, you have all garage doors and very little, very little streetscape or attractive elevations on the houses. I firmly believe that everybody in the city benefits very much for having the highest quality upscale community in the Big Woods. And I would submit to the planning commission that in the interest of building a community that will be a tremendous asset for the city, that you support these requests because they're not really, they're not really asking for anything that really damages anyone else in the process. Part of the property, whether we're asking for the 40-foot buffer to be reduced, we own the property, but the board is on it. The other part is, part is the EDA. Al White, Al White's family owns property also there. But there are only three property owners that are involved in the 40-foot buffer. But it does have a profound impact on what this community will look like when it's finished, and something that you, us, and city council and Pecosa will be proud of. So we would appreciate your support on these requests, and we don't believe that, we believe they are totally in the interest of everybody involved. Thank you.
Anything else before we close the public hearing on this particular item? Okay, we'll close it, and now we will take this under consideration.
I would just like to state my concurrence with what Libby said and what Ms. Canelle said, basically, is that for the clubhouse, that was, I think Ms. Canelle said it well, is it, it was a key component that was marketed, essential to attract buyers, and I just tend to agree, concur with that statement and concur with what Libby was saying as well.
And I would add to that, although it may not affect my vote, but I would add to that that my understanding of the definition of the planned development overlay included recreational facilities. It doesn't say recreational facilities sometime. It says recreation facilities. So if this is, if this is an approved PUD, it seems to me that recreational facilities are part of the plan, part of the requirement, the zoning requirement. That's why it was built this way, I think.
My difficulty with the issue is if we say, okay, you've got to do this at the 80th permit, and it doesn't get done, what then? What, but what do we have as a fallback if we enforce the 80th?
We would issue building permits up to the 80th if I, but we would not issue any building permit beyond that.
But that would be firm.
Right.
There's some precedence that was set for the 80 versus the 140 from the get-go? Can we speak to them, or?
You have a question?
I do have a question. Is there, yeah. I was just wondering where the 80 came from as opposed to 140.
I think, I think, Libby, we thought at the time that we were going to develop one side of Phase 1 and then go directly into Phase 2. But when we got into the engineering plans, it really required for drainage and whatever else that we almost developed all of Phase 1. So, and Phase 1 was, once the engineering plans were done, it was way more complicated than what we saw with the conceptual plans and whatever else. And we didn't anticipate this. But I'll tell you this, when we developed the Villas projects, all the Villa projects, Villas Oxford Run, we developed over probably close to 60 different communities, and we've never had, I mean, we've got a history of development and understanding the financial aspect of development and how to put one together and what it takes to make it work. We're not just here the first time trying to do something. We've been doing this for about 30 years, and we have projects over 1,000 lots that we've been working, that we've worked with. We have some big projects right now that we're working with. So I can assure you that by closing on all the property, by getting, we're working on the final development plans on all the property, by getting all the wetland permits on all the property, we have an enormous investment in this property that will definitely mandate that it has to be developed. So it's, it's not an issue, will it be developed? It will be developed. There's no choice but that. And we look forward to it because, I mean, we got involved in this because we wanted to do something really that would, we have a history in Pecosa, and we had pride, and we had, we were honored to have the opportunity to do this. And our finish, the finished product comes here, we want to see something that all of us can be proud of, including us. Hopefully, it will be, it will be profitable. There's no guarantee any project, any development will be profitable, but you do have to have, you do have to have a reasonable financial plan. If you don't, then your project won't be successful.
So you're the one that came forth, or you're...
Yeah, Libby, it was kind of arbitrary at the time. We were asked at the time, and we thought, well, we just threw out 80, and we didn't think about developing all of Phase 1 at the same time, but as the engineering plans came out, it required that. And we really, in reality, what will happen, we'll probably get to 80, and we may, we may continue to build after 80, but we may start Phase 2 at about 80 because it's going to take about a year to get the plans approved for Section 2, which we're working on now, and to build a road, and then build a clubhouse, and all that. That will take about a year. So they'll still be building in Phase 1 after 80. At the same time, the improvements will be going in to get to the clubhouse and building the Boulevard going to the clubhouse. So it just makes financial sense, and it makes the whole project flow a lot better to do it this way.
Second, my second question would be, I know Mr. Weston's concern regarding stormwater and the apartment site that will ultimately, is that something that y'all have looked at or addressed?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what those comments were, but, but the, the, yeah, Lamont addressed that. The apartments are, the apartments are a separate site. We have a apartment developer who was going to build the apartments, and he was at all the rezoning meetings and whatever, they were at the rezoning meetings or whatever. And there'll be, there'll be a site plan. Let Lamont address that question as far as, Lamont?
Ms. Gribble, yeah, we, the Phase 1 plans that were originally submitted did not show, as I mentioned, didn't show the apartments because that will be a separate site plan. It's not being used as stormwater management. That's simply inaccurate. There may have, if there was a level spread, there were a couple of level spreaders shown on the plan, which, that's all being reworked. The original thought at the time was that we would, that we would drain, that the apartments would have onsite stormwater retention. We found that in order to do that, it really, it was too troublesome because we would lose so much green space. So what we are doing in our revised plan is basically putting stormwater management where we found that we don't need the overflow parking, and instead, that land is better suited for stormwater management. So that property, the apartment site, would actually drain if you're looking to the west or to the bottom of the page, and then it would go enter into the roadside ditch system and then be conveyed back to Oxford Run. So we're just trying to, we're working with the land there. So the apartment site is not being used for stormwater management. We have to anticipate, and we have anticipated the amount of impervious surface and how much, how much stormwater management that we need, and we have done that, and we are able to accommodate that onsite with the purchase of some nutrient credits. So that, again, the commercial was not ready to be built yet, and we did not conclude that in the plan. The apartments will be submitted, will be engineered and submitted by the actual apartment builder, and so those would come in as well. But all of the stormwater plans for this area, we've been reworking them and reworking them. They've come back with some things that we said, no, that doesn't work. So that is a work in progress, but it is a fact that we are not using the apartment land for stormwater management.
But, but it looks like on this map, the BMP, the addition, is actually going into the wetland sit-aside. Is that...
No, no. That's not, no. No, it would only go in an upland area, and I can show you here, I think, probably better. But if we go in this area here...
All right, so it's close to...
This is not, yeah, this is, there's wet, there are wetlands in here. We would avoid those. We are not, again, I have to reiterate this, I can't say it enough, we are not asking for any change in the number of units. We are not asking for any change in the amount of impacted wetlands. None, zero. We can't do that. If we did that, then Ms. Tresdeal would be correct. If we did that, if we changed the wetland impacts, then we would, that would have to go back to the Corr and to DEQ. We've spoken to DEQ about this. They're aware of these changes. They contacted me. I explained to them, and so they're aware of this. We're not, you know, we're not trying to do anything, you know, untoward here. We're very upfront on these things, and we discuss them with all the regulatory agencies. So, so no, no, no additional wetland impacts beyond what we are permitted for, no additional units beyond what we are approved for.
And that's the initial approval, is what you're saying? So there is eight or nine extra lots is not something you're looking for?
No, we're not, we are approved for 238 single-family homes, 107 townhouses, 11 cottages, and up to 200 apartments. We will be probably only building 176 apartments. That's what the latest plans show. The 11 cottages, our Phase 1 plan only had 105 townhomes, and we're trying to get back to where we were approved. That's why I mentioned, and again, and Ms. Schreiber, I apologize for kind of getting into that other buffer issue, you know, at the same time, but all, but these, we are trying to avoid having to either lose or so dramatically downsize lots that they just are not going to be able to support the type of houses that we anticipate here. So we're not, again, these are not additional lots we're asking for. When you look at the plan, 238 is the maximum. We will be lucky to get close to that.
I know you also mentioned, and I guess that's on here somewhere, regarding the different elevations of these properties, and you made a very good point that I would just like to point out, that if you have nothing but garages across the front, it doesn't lend itself to be in a very, very pretty project. So I would hope that, again, I haven't, I don't know what you have in mind, but I would hope that that would be avoided where it's nothing but garage doors across the front.
No, we don't, we don't want that. And we, and one of the reasons, again, I'm getting ahead of myself, again, I apologize, but one of the reasons that we ask, well, for one thing, there were some elevations that did not get in the council package, but we're talking to other builders, and so we're, you know, we want to make sure that we have the ability to provide other types of housing products. And the reason that we wanted, for the townhouses in particular, is that we don't want to go with all the same type of townhouse because it really appeals to one sort of buyer profile. So we want to have the ability to have maybe some two-stories, some downstairs masters that, you know, that appeal to an older clientele. So, again, we're trying, as we did in Whittaker's Mill very successfully, we're trying to appeal to as broad a range of buyer so that everyone can be a part of this community, which is what community is all about, really.
We have six of these tonight. This is the first one. I, I'm just going to throw this out. Think about the whole thing, like, and just, we're getting ready to probably, maybe we are going to take a vote on this first one, but I'm just wondering if it, if you feel, and I sort of feel this way, possibly we need to have a little more study of this, perhaps another work session, because tonight, the work session that we had was more of a presentation from Wally, which he had to do, and we, I don't think we really got to discuss, probably, we were under some time constraint to get the meeting started. I just, you know, I wonder if I shouldn't mention this before we go, you know, we'll certainly have to open the public hearings on the other items, but I just wonder where you feel like we're going here.
If you don't mind, Madam Chair, I'll just jump in here. You know, we were receiving, at least I've been receiving information from the public up until 4:30 this afternoon, some of which I got through and some of which, I'll be honest with you, I didn't get through. And, you know, we picked up some very appropriate information again this evening. My feeling is this is too important a decision for a knee-jerk reaction. It just, it just is, you know? It'd be really easy to sit down and say, no. And I, I'm not ready to make a knee-jerk reaction at this point in time on any of these topics, but I certainly think we need to have the public hearings, but that would be my thought, just by...
I feel that way. It's kind of, go over, and I think we need to have a little more, I think I need, I'll say that. I don't want anybody else, but I'm like...
Yeah, I'm in concert as well.
Yeah.
I think, I think this is the largest project in the history of the city, right here, right now, and the diligence that you all have put us on this commission to do, we really haven't had the opportunity of time. We received the package on Friday because there were still clarifications that needed to be made through the city attorney's office. Many of us were not on the prior commission in 2015, so we've all had to really do a lot of study in a very short amount of time. We want to give you the best of our brains and feedback in a respectful manner. I don't take this decision lightly at all. And I, I think I concur, Madam Chairman. I'd like maybe to go ahead and hear as many comments tonight, particularly from the public who have taken the time to come out this evening, but I do think we need to drill down a little bit more on some of the, because it's an interrelated problem. We're looking at phasing, phase builds on the, on the rest, called a PUD for, for...
And I think in fairness to all, in fairness to the developers, and in fairness to the citizens, and in fairness to us, in order that we can, we can go over what we feel is, you know, a lot, a lot here to look at, and we don't want to be rushed to just jump into it. I think it's, you know, it's unfair to us to, tonight... I think it's, you know, it's unfair to us to, tonight, to, to really have to make that final vote. I mean, it, we're a recommending body, so what we, what we recommend may not be adhered to by the city council, but for us, we just, I think we all kind of feel that way, am I getting that, okay? So what we would do, I guess, is take a motion to postpone this first one and go through the others, and if people so want to postpone those, we'll also do that. We'll hold the public hearings on them, so if someone wants to come up and say something on the next item, we're going to take up. On this one, this particular one that we have just had the public hearing on, what is your, I guess, take a motion for a postponement?
Yep.
Okay, so do I have a motion for a postponement on this one? Second? Okay, Karen.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of seven to zero, affirmative.
All right. So we will go to the next request, which is a request for a rezoning amendment to approve townhome elevations that were not submitted with the original set of approved elevations. Wally?
Thought I'd get a, a lot of questions here, so bear with me for just a moment. I'm going to talk to the mic.
Oh, oh, okay, got you. Maybe I don't got you.
We need one 16-year-old rancher.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Just wanted to show everybody a few of the drawings, it's in the packet, but I just sort of wanted to show some of the newer drawings here, which will definitely be in the PowerPoint next time. Bear with me for a minute, if I look at the screen, you'll get your eyes damaged. I scored right past them? I guess I did.
Got to keep going.
All right, well, I'm going to do it. All right, thanks for bearing with me. This application for amendments rezoning is to look at some additional designs that were not submitted with the first go-around. Let me see if I can rotate this. Okay, so these are all proposed additions to the variety of homes that the applicant has spoken of. The first one is a rearload, actually, what they call the composer rearload. Get out of this mess here. Still messing it up, Barnagaz. Okay. That's, well, it's got, and then the next one's actually a rearload. This one, okay, the first one was frontload, I'm sorry, stand corrected, the first one's frontload, this one's rearload, and these are both Ryan homes, I believe, is that right? These were Ryans? This one is, this one's a little bit closer to what was originally submitted with the application. The original application was submitted with H8 Hunt, HH Hunt Townhomes, and they, they had a lot of differentiation, they had some dormer windows on the top, and they also had like a second floor open, open porch area, which these don't have. Are these Hunts or Ryans?
We have, we have some of each, I believe, in here. These are Ryans, this is also a different take on the composer series. You have a two- and three-story product. I would like to mention that the ones that were previously approved, the Hunt, that is still in, in play, so we're not looking to substitute that.
This would, this would be increasing the variety of.
Right, exactly. We're trying to just give more ability to, to reach to different, like I say, different buyer profiles and also different product.
Understood, understood. Okay, so, and these were, these were all submitted, okay. Basically, staff's comments at this point would really be that, you understand the need to have a larger variety of townhomes. There was only one submitted with the original, with the original application. The question is this, where are each of these types going to go and what numbers are going to be? I mean, we understand the concept of variety, but obviously variety implies a number of different designs and not just one. So, you know, that was really, in looking at these, that was the staff concern, is that one of these might be used more than the others, let's say, and that you might end up with more of a homogeneous type housing in the townhome area, then, then would certainly be advisable. One of the things, I think, the applicant's own thing is to provide a variety, we just want to see what kind of variety that's going to be and how that's going to shake out. So that's a, and, and I'll let you get recognized by the table. But that, that's really what I had, Madam Chairwoman. I mean, I'll take any questions that you might have, but that's really. I, I do have one question, it's probably, the answer is probably obvious, but on the new proposed townhouses, do they all meet the same height requirements as were originally approved? They will all meet the height requirements that were originally. Okay, just wanted to verify that. Right. They will not be, I mean, I think it's fair to say that the HH Hunt that was originally opposed might be a little bit more on the upscale side, these are to obviously provide the variety and. I'm talking about the basic size, you're not getting taller or anything like that. Yes, and, and of course, we would, we would certainly enforce that as well, but, yes.
Is it customary for a PUD to actually specify the type of home that's going to go into each, is that what your, your concern is, that you don't know where these might be placed?
Well, I think the applicant can clarify that. I don't know that we can actually say which kinds we like or what goes where and that sort of thing, but I think, excuse me, I think the applicant can certainly clarify, you know, what their intentions are. That was just one that didn't really come out, didn't really jump out at, at staff when we were writing this report.
Is there an area for rear, rearloading units, design-wise, as far as the road system?
There is an area still for rearload. I think the rearload units are greatly reduced because of some of the, the site plan requirements that they've had, but. Please do this in the current site plan. Excuse me, sort of standing in front of you there. There were going to be originally rearloads that were back here, but because of the imposition of the buffer, these are now frontloaded. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that these are frontloaded now, just they were originally going to be rearloaded. So there's a few left rearloaded, but there are some rearloads. We've got some alleys down from here, and up there, but noted places.
Is that the intent, to be rearloaded in that area, that he just pointed out? Chairman, I'm.
I may be able to clarify, it's a little easier for me, I think, maybe to do it with this, just because I don't have a pointer, but, yeah, we, Legacy Boulevard, we do not want any driveways on Legacy Boulevard. So Legacy Boulevard has been designed to be a very attractive thoroughfare, heavily landscaped, with no driveways, no cars on it. So in order to do that, you have an alley, I named those units, so then in order to make that efficient, then the units behind it are also rearloaded. So we're trying to keep, and probably will, we don't, what we don't want to do is, we clearly do not want to get into saying, this product's going to go here, this product's going to go here, this, then the minute you change something, here we are, you know, we're going over it all over again. So obviously, there has to be that flexibility to work with the builders, but our, but our vision is for Legacy Boulevard to be entirely rearloaded, so you see these alleys in here. Now this, this was, we removed this alley and we did it for a very specific reason, and that is, one of the things we agreed to do in our wetland permit was to provide some ability to recharge this, this, this preserved wetland area. So this, this alley here, when we looked at the actual, the actual hard engineering drawings on the alley, we said, wait a minute, if we put that alley back there, there's stormwater management in that alley, we're actually going to be taking water away from the wetlands, not putting water, not providing opportunity for wetland recharge. So what we're doing, and so from an aesthetic standpoint, it also kind of sets it up nicely because you concentrate your rearloaded product in here along Legacy Boulevard, in these, in these two blocks here, yeah, that would likely be a, predominantly it'd be a three-story product, that will give, have a lot of sense of massing, have a little, have a more sense of a sense of presence, and then your two-story product, we believe, not all, some of your two-story product, there's opportunities for that on the wings of the project. Along here, this will probably be a three, this will probably be a three-story product, frontload, because of that buffer, and again, the imposition of that buffer along Oxford Run shortened those lots upsets that we are limited into the type of, of product we can put there. For example, we can't put a 70-foot-deep two-story townhome product there, it just won't fit, so we go with a, with a shallower, a shallower product. So there's sort of what our thinking is, but, but clearly, we don't want any driveways on Legacy Boulevard, and when you build that and you build these alleys, and that by itself, you know, predetermines that these blocks will all be rearloaded blocks. So the intent is, is for the single families, for the rearloads to be all on here, it's a different buyer than families, and we really, the, the single families back here are really much more sort of family-oriented because they have, you know, the backyard for the kids to play and all that, even some, and some people want more of a backyard, for some people it's just not that important, it's really all about the house. So does that clarify?
Yeah, it does. Is, is there a playground area there? I'm sorry if I missed that, is there a playground area?
There will be, yeah, the playground area is up here by.
By the pool?
Yeah.
Is the intent to have one or, or more builders?
The intent's to have more than one builder.
More than one builder in there?
That's our intent, I mean, it may change, but right now, we, we feel like a project to this size, it gives you more, a little more flexibility, it gives you a little more variety for the buyers to choose from.
Size of this compared to Whittaker's Mill?
Well, Whittaker's Mill is, when we're finished, will be 228 units, 114 singles, 114 towns. So that would be, discounting the apartments, if you take the apartments out of it, it's about one and a half times the size of Whittaker's Mill. If you add the apartments, it's, it's, it's over twice the size. Insert the number again.
Any more questions of them? We're ready to. Okay, so at this time, we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this request, and if you have anything regarding this particular request, please come forward and hear what you have to say. No one wishes to speak? We'll close the public hearing. Plant and Commission, I think, probably take a vote, a motion to postpone this one? Second?
I'll second.
Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Aye.
Motion to postpone was carried by a vote of seven.
Okay, moving on to the third request, and this is a request for a buffer modification to area number one on the submitted legacy of Picosen Master Plan to reduce the 40-foot perimeter buffer to 10 feet, which, which area may be included in recorded lots but which shall remain undisturbed.
Okay.
For reference, we're back to, back from my pitch earlier on, that's out, property of my, Mr. White, he was here earlier tonight, and basically all of the talks he's played on this one. Request is to go from 40-foot buffer, and there was some question earlier about what that solid red line is, it looks to me like it's what the 40-foot buffer would look like. So really, you take, you take basically a quarter of that here and you've got 10 feet.
It is proposed as an undisturbed buffer, which in this area, if you look at the aerial, it's all wooded, eh, it's all wooded, so the expectation of staff would be that, that the trees in that area are going to remain. The big thing, and, and I'll give you a few figures here, I think we talked a little bit in the work session about what was granted with the original approval, we talked about the 40-foot landscape yards that were approved. This area and this area, so this is, you know, it depends on how you look at it, it's somewhat superior to that in that it does preserve 10 feet of wooded area. But just for the, for the math gurus among us, if you impose a 40-foot buffer in this area, which would be densely wooded, you would be providing about 2.02 acres, or 8700, 87,600 square feet of naturally vegetated area. A 10-foot undisturbed buffer basically goes 25% of that, .503 acres or 21,900 square feet of naturally vegetated area. So that's your difference right there. So, you know, the requested reduction is somewhat offset by the abutment of a large, densely wooded lot, however, as Mr. White indicated earlier today, that may not always be the case. You know, whether it's him or his successors, there will probably be some development on that property at some point in time. The zoning ordinance right now, it depends on what kind of subdivision he does. If he does a conventional subdivision, you know, basically the buffer to the lots back there will be pretty much what they provide in their backyards. If he does a planned open space development, then he would have a 40-foot buffer requirement as well, which is, it's not a PUD 40-foot buffer, it's, it's, it's fairly ironclad. Not that there can't be variances, somebody mentioned subdivision variances earlier, but, you know, it would probably be, probably be a hardship of making. And I'm mumbling, I'm sorry, I got to remember speaking into this mic. Staff would comment, and it was. Uh, staff would comment, and it was brought out in the word section, uh, in the work session, uh, that the wording in reference to a 40-foot perimeter buffer reduction to 10 feet includes the wording, which area may be included in recorded lots, but which shall remain undisturbed. May be included in recorded lots. I think we ought to get a clarification on whether, in fact, it's going to be as part of the recorded lots, or it's going to be, um, you know, managed by a homeowners association or some sort of common area. That would be, uh, that'd be pretty much of it. Uh, either way, there would be a need for reduc-, uh, recreadation of the 10-foot buffer area. Uh, staff would further interpret undisturbed as, as I said before, the preservation of already existing trees and vegetation with no development allowed in this area. What that means is that we would definitely not allow any accessory buildings within that 10-foot buffer area. We, we wouldn't force that on the surface. That's what I have for that one. Any questions, I'll be glad to take them.
Wally, and just to clarify, those adjacent properties in the future land use map are village commercial?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Uh, in fact, let me go back a little bit. That's a good point to make. Remember, the crosshatched area is the area where the PUD MU has been activated. The underlying district on part of this back there actually is VC, but, uh, you can see that you don't have the crosshatches over there, so yes, that, that would, that'd be VC, no imposition of planned, uh, unit development. And in fact, to expand into that area, as someone suggested earlier, would actually require another amendment to initiate activation of PUD MU in that area, so...
Wally, uh, ma'am?
Yeah, I, I, I guess I needed a visual because I'm a visual learner, so I put cups on the floor, um, so forgive me. So 40 feet is from this bar here, and Andy, if you don't mind going standing by the cup, so that's, that's a 40-foot buffer, folks, and then Lamont, if you can maybe stand at the 10-foot line. So this is, you know, 10 foot versus 40 foot, so it just helped me to sort of visualize what we mean in distance.
Okay, so no more questions of Wally, and, okay, let's go ahead and we'll open the public hearing on this item three, agenda item three. If something, come forward.
Madam Chairman, Madam Commissioner, again, Lamont Myers, manager of Big Woods Development Company. Um, I think maybe, I'm going to depart from my prepared remarks here, and let's talk about what does a buffer do? What's the point of a buffer? Point of a buffer is to shield objectionable activity from less objectionable activity. Um, I think if anyone disagrees with that, uh, let me know, but I mean, generally, the idea of a buffer is to protect your neighbors. Um, so when you look at this project, and you say, okay, now, I think one clarif-, might point of clarification, Ms. Emmett, your question, you said, what is the, is all zone village commercial? Uh, actually, that's for this property, yes, okay?
You're right, I'm...
This property is all zone residential.
Ah, okay, thank you.
So what you're talking about is basically houses backing up the housing, you know, so it's not like, here comes a single-family house, there goes the neighborhood. I'm a little, so I'm, I'm a little puzzled by that take because, again, we all live, we've all lived in houses, we've all had neighbors, and typically, we have neighbors who back up to neighbors, and, and that's just sort of how it is. So, so here we have a situation where we're going to have houses, lot, backyards, that are going to back up to an unyet-to-be-developed residential neighborhood. So, again, which is, again, why we never, never anticipated, nor do we ever show a buffer here, because we're talking about residential next to residential. Now here, we did not anticipate it here, but we went ahead and said, okay, we'll incorporate that in the plan because this will be a commercial activity here. Here, you're talking commercial activity, but again, who are we shielding? Are we shielding commercial users from these awful houses? Or are we shielding exactly what we're doing? And not only that, these properties are landlocked. If you, if you drive down, if you look and you think about what is the commercial viability, think for a moment, what's the commercial viability of that piece of property right there? Who's going to build anything commercial so far back in the woods that it can't be seen and that you have to meander through a residential neighborhood to get to? No one. So you're talking about residential next to residential, and I would say frankly, what's the problem? I don't see it. Um, so again, it's, um, I don't want to belabor that point, but again, when you look at these buffers, they're there for a reason. That ordinance was, actually was modified from the ordinance that was approved for the, uh, Marina Project down by, um, White House Cove. It's, uh, the one that's now the trailer, uh, trailer park and, and restaurant. But again, that ordinance was, was originally done for that, and it was just a, simply a modification of that. But again, a more intensive development. If you were looking at a highly intensive apartments, commercial, heavy multifamily adjacent to a single-family neighborhood, would a buffer be appropriate? Yes, probably it would. When you're looking at single-family detached residential adjacent to undeveloped wooded residentially-zoned property, you really have to wonder, what's the purpose of the buffer other than just to have it? So, uh, that would be my, that would be my thought on that. I think we really need to ask ourselves, what is it we're trying to accomplish here? What is it we're trying to do? And we're trying to do a high-quality project that we have, we've been working on for six years, very diligently, through all kinds of trials and tribulations, and we're trying to, now we're in the hard engineering phase, we're trying to basically address some of those technical questions that come to light when you actually have your engineers start to design these things. So, um, uh, again, we're not, and I can't say it enough, but I will say it again, we're not asking for more units, we're not asking to impact more wetlands. People may come up and say, well, here's, there's wetlands. Any wetlands in here, there's not a lot, these are all scattered, isolated wetlands, not even jurisdictional to the core, only to the EQ, those are all permitted. There are no wetlands down here. This is a very clean area. I don't know about Mr. White's property, we don't have provisions there, so I don't know what the situation, but I know we have nothing here. These are isolated, scattered, they're all permitted, so there's no change in runoff, there's no change in wetlands, there's no change in density, there's no change in the number of units. The only difference is, as Ms. Fenix had pointed out, and I think very well, the difference, do you leave this much trees, or do you leave that much trees to protect houses from houses? And I would submit that it really is unnecessary, and, thank you.
Um, I, I do have a question.
Sure.
Um, have you heard of green infrastructure in the Dutch dialogues that's going, currently going on in Hampton? Seeing trees as stormwater management?
It's a very complicated thing. Uh, this site does not lend itself well to that, um, in terms of, now, if you, we, we do get a lot of stormwater credit because we are preserving a huge wetland area. So we do get a lot of credit for that, you get, you, uh, but in terms of, of, you know, going back and designing a stormwater management system around a 40-foot buffer, I don't think for engineering...
This is the value of trees, Lamont. Um, there's very, very exciting science right now that can prove the absorption rate of trees with stormwater management is quite profound, and it is very inexpensive for you as a developer to have to then go engineering, uh, you know, expensive BMPs when you've got nature doing its, its job for you. Um, I did a very quick calculation, again, we didn't have time to go into a lot of detail. I, I did consult with a consultant from Virginia Tech over the weekend. Um, right now, the proposal for the three areas is three and a half acres of buffer, which would be at the 40-foot, um, width, so it'd be from this here back to where Andy stood, that's 40, 40 feet. Um, if I use the calculations that, um, that Wally used, it's three and a half acres. For one-inch rain event, that would generate 95,000 gallons of water, and I would think that maintaining trees could be in your best advantage because right there on-site, you have your own natural stormwater, um, retention system. So I would, I would hope that maybe you would consider that. Um, when we talk about abutting up to other neighbors right now, it is all green space, but we're going to be here many, many years. Um, and what's happening in Hampton is that they did not have the foresight of using trees and vegetation for their stormwater management. Now they're having to retrofit and plant trees. We have an asset with mature trees there that I hope with the buffer and particularly the calculation and the impact on stormwater management, um, could be a, you know, a, a cost saver for you in the long run.
If, if it's approvable, Ms. Fenix, and that I don't know because we have gone through, when we get into the engineering, we're subject to the Virginia Stormwater Regulations, as you know, and, um, to get things to allow sheet flow even from backyards is very, very difficult to get, get approved, to allow any kind of sheet flow. Uh, every, the, the regulations, typically, the engineers want to see that water channelized and directed, so if that were the case, and if we could eliminate a lot of stormwater management, that would be one thing. My experiences show me that that doesn't really work that way, uh, in practice because you're still, but, you're still bound by local regulations and you're bound by the state's stormwater management regulations. So if you have a large area that you set aside for stor-, for stormwater management, and you can direct a lot of flow to a large wooded area, that's one thing, but a small strip along the back of people's houses to effectively be able to reduce your BMPs, I would be surprised if that were approvable. But I've not, I would have, I'm willing to have an open mind, I've just, uh, my engineers have never, uh, have never shared that with me, I will ask that question, but I am...
It's a very exciting new science, um, in terms of, you're, you're looking at contiguous, um, property around the perimeter, um, it could be really, really effective, um, you know, stormwater absorption feature for you. And, and the thinking now is that we've got a slow water, not to get it out quickly, and the old thinking was we have to get off a parking lot and into the nearest drainage ditch. Well, it, that's impacting down, down, downstream. I'm sure Mr. Spencer found when we did the Pecoson Shopping Center, without that buffer behind the shopping center, the houses behind, you know, really had a stormwater problem and flooding, and so, you know, we in Pecoson don't have the luxury of, of elevation, so we have to be, I think, be creative in our storm... I think this, this has something that perhaps could be considered under the buffer.
Well, certainly, we'll look at it, we will, we'd never reject something like that out of hand. I just know the difficulty we've had in getting our stormwater plans approved in all the jurisdictions, and it's, uh, it's a very exacting process, to say the least.
My position's going to be a little bit different, uh, if you knew where my wife would tell you that I'm very inflexible, and I'm afraid I'm going to sound like I'm being inflexible, but as I said the other meeting, I know the code currently calls for a 40-foot buffer. That's what's in the code. Now, maybe that came from the waterfront side, I don't know that, but that's what it called for. It seems to me that we're going about this in the wrong direction, in the wrong way. If we want to change that guideline, we ought to be changing what the code says, not doing variances or waivers. Does that make sense? I mean, either the code is right or the code is wrong, and I think we should be addressing the code if the code is wrong. I think waivers is just a Band-Aid, and I just don't think that's the direction to go in. That's, that's my opinion on both first two. I get, I get the numbers looked, I guess it's one and two, but those two, that's my opinion.
Can I make a comment?
That's not your fault, sir, that's our fault.
We still have a couple comments here? If you want to, you can, if you have something to discuss, and I'll let you do it.
Uh, thank you, Lee, for pointing that out to Mr. Lamont, that trees are vitally important, and I assume that you also breathe oxygen too, Mr. Lamont. Um, the purpose of the PUD MU is to, um, offset, is, it's an, it's a relief from traditional zoning requirements. They're already getting relief, and it's as Mr. Travis says, you know, change the, change the ordinances, you know? This just looks like to me just an abuse of the PUD MU, um, program, process, which your city spent forever working on and presenting back in 2015. So, um, it's just, the statements about the trees and the buffer was just mind-boggling, ridiculous to me.
Okay, well, I guess we ought to open the public hearing, so we'll consider that in the public hearing here. Karen is trying to, right, and I am too, because it's kind of running together a little bit here. Okay, so we have the public hearing, it's open if you'd like to come up and speak now, please do, and give us your name. This lady over here had already given us our name, her name, I think Karen has that and address. You haven't spoken, so give Karen your name and address.
My name is Marie Hollingsworth. I live at 223 Elliott Road, Yorktown, Virginia, and my backyard is the backwoods, and I'm very concerned about the 40-foot buffer, and I, as Mr. Travis said, that's in the ordinance, it should stand, there shouldn't be any debate about this. And my backyard is very important to me. I bought a 1.37 acre piece of property, and we, we had as many trees as we could keep, and we looked at it in an environmental way. I spent the last leg of my career in the environmental arena for the federal government. I'm not addressing this group in that way. I'm telling you, I, I wasn't able to see your rendition here because you didn't turn it around for all of us to see. As you spoke, it was this way, so I haven't been able to see what you're talking about when you speak, but I do want to lodge this fact. A 40-foot buffer is very important to me, and it would be important to anybody that has a yard and cares about having a yard. Those backwoods are the reason that I bought that property at a very high price, and I've not been able to see where your proposed development is going to impinge upon my backyard, and I'd love to see that.
Where do you, where do you live?
I live on 223 Elliott Road.
So you're down here somewhere.
This is Victor Boulevard?
Yes.
And I live down here on Elliott. My backyard is in Pecoson. It's in the big woods.
Uh, then, well, we, it's owned by other people, we, we're preserving...
This one shows the houses, if that helps.
Oh, great, okay.
Okay, so this is woods... You're down here.
I'm close to adjoining...
Adjoining 23 acres of preserved wetlands. No, no, we're preserving this. No, this is staying, this is staying just like it is. You're backing up to 23 acres of preserved trees.
Okay, where's Elliott Road here?
Elliott Road's not even shown on here, it's down here. So you must have one of these parcels that backs up to this preserved...
This is...
Talking about...
Oh, I understand.
Yeah.
I'm interested in what you're not...
This is commercial?
Space here, how much is this?
23 acres.
Okay, all told, it's not right behind you.
This piece is 23 acres.
Yeah, I understand.
Same here behind.
140-foot lot, mega.
Always.
Okay, thank you for sharing that.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having this, the right to look at, I appreciate that.
I'm Mary Kay Weston again. I agree with Mr. Travis. The PUD regulations that you all recommended back in 2013 specifically address 40-foot buffers. The only time you don't have to have a buffer is if it's adjoining another PUD. If it's adjoining commercial property, then you have to have at least a 20-foot buffer. The law is Section 8, 4-5. I think it is ridiculous, you wrote laws for legacy, now you're asking us... Now you're asking us to let them continue to break laws. There's a reason buffers were there and the idea that the developer doesn't even understand the environmental impact that buffers have. It impacts stormwater quality. It affects what's going into our bay. It affects wetlands. I did call DEQ to ask if, with all the changes that were made, if there would have to be another permitting. And they said, yes, if it affects wetlands. Removal of buffers affects wetlands. They said that the developer is required to let DEQ know of any major changes. Have you notified DEQ of these changes?
I spoke to them with DEQ, yes, ma'am. They understand.
When was that? Two days ago. They said that you hadn't talked to them.
Who you talked to? I spoke to them last week, but that's.
All right. So there is a serious question. We've talked to environmental lawyers. There's a serious question about whether this buffer reduction is going to require new permitting. I think we need, I'm very glad that you're putting this off. I think you at least need to wait until the permitting with DEQ and Army Corps is redone. These are major changes. Mr. Lamont Myers has told a lot of interesting stories tonight. Not all of them are accurate. And I really resent that he gets up and says things he obviously is not knowledgeable about. The use and importance of buffers is not just to block visuals.
Okay. I think we're getting a little bit away from what we're here for tonight, getting on the course that we don't need to be on. And I think we need to move on.
I'm Lindsay Watson at 9 Frank Hunt Court. I am in the Hunt Woods neighborhood. I'm here to give weight to the folks you've already heard giving pushback and due diligence, in doing due diligence. If this is our Pecoson legacy, worth our green space, worth our money, our traffic, our neighbor space, I think more research is needed. And I'm glad to hear you all are going to postpone and look around. My neighborhood is an oasis, particularly my backyard. Really enjoy it, mostly due to the trees, some awesome neighbors and such. They're more than stormwater management, as amazing as that is. I didn't know that fact. I love coming and learning, watching and learning. But nature has a way of regulating itself. It also has a helpful way of regulating ourselves. I walk in my neighborhood, my yard. I hear birds, hear the bats, or see the bats, cicadas. I breathe. And I ask you to protect that oasis, our oasis. We're about to crack the ground open with this, and I just ask you guys to hold everybody accountable, ourselves, developer, everybody. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Okay. We'll close this public hearing. Planning Commission. Any comments or anything we need to make? Motion to postpone if, on this one?
I'll make a motion to postpone it to a further date.
Second. Okay. Karen?
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner DeWitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Cheryl Schirr?
Aye.
That motion was carried by vote 7-0.
All right. We're moving on to number four, which is request for a buffer modification to Area Number Two on the submitted legacy of Pecoson Master Plan to reduce 40-foot perimeter buffer to 10 feet, which area may be included in recorded lots, but which shall remain undisturbed.
Thank you. All apologies to the misstatement of zoning with the last one. I got thinking about modification number two, and I should have thought about modification number one, because that's what we were talking about. But it is indeed zone residential. So this one, however, does abut village commercial property. The modification here, the stated intent is to allow development of an additional five lots, again, towards the, what they were originally approved for. This is the buffer that actually also includes the road that was offered to the EDA. The EDA had their hearing. They basically recommended approval in as much as they could as a body. But they had a condition that the road be provided. The applicant has sent a letter saying that they are willing to grant that access for the EDA properties. And I would ask at this point that that would be considered as part of your consideration of the request, would include that road. So, and we've, we've gotten legal advice that, that we're okay with doing that. So I just wanted to make sure that that's, that's.
Have a right of clarification on any problem. And that letter is a clarification of intent. So you, in effect, are clarifying that to include the letter which was sent and accepted by the EDA.
This, this buffer modification will work much like buffer modification number one. It would be a 40-foot buffer reduced to 10-foot, which may be included in recorded lots. Again, that word "may" is out there, but which will remain undisturbed. And much like with buffer modification number one, staff would interpret that to be that we would not allow any development, any accessory buildings within that 10-foot. And we would expect that to remain in undisturbed trees, as the case is here. I think that's about all I've really got to say for that one. Unless there's any questions, be glad to clarify.
Questions? Wally? Okay. Thank you, Wally. If we have any later, we'll. Okay. So on number four request, we are now opening the public hearing. If you have something regarding this, please come forward and speak.
Madam Chair, members of the House, again, just to clarify a couple of things very quickly. I think Mr. Horton may have mentioned gaining an additional five lots. That's actually not accurate. We, those lots have been shown on the master plan from the beginning. They were just, we were trying not to lose the five lots that were previously, previously approved. Because as you can see, the way this narrows down here, the, but this area as it narrows down, we impose 40-foot buffer, it basically widens lots. These shallow lots. So when we went to the Economic Development Authority, we knew they owned adjacent property. They had, while we have, as you can see here, we're providing two points of access to adjacent property owned by the White family. We felt it was certainly fair that we would, that we could provide an additional access point for the Economic Development Authority property as, as well, and they, they saw that. So there are two neighbors to this buffer. One is the Economic Development Authority, the other is us. And so we, and the, the EDA did vote, as I understand it, to recommend approval or to support us on that. Caveated that we provided them that access. So again, we're not, you know, we're, again, all of these areas that we're talking about, you have three property owners, of which the EDA is one, we are one, and Mr. White's property is the other. So thank you.
Where is Mr. White's property on that?
Mr. White wants to.
That's section in there?
All of this here. Everything between the Villas and Hunt Woods.
Oh, okay. And where is his access to that property?
Do you have an opinion?
And he has no access off with Creek Road?
I think, I'm not sure what he has off with Creek Road, but we were required, and we, we said, you know, it's good planning to provide access to adjacent property. So we had no objection to that.
He's got access to, we, we've built one lane to drive into his property.
Anyone else?
I have some heightened concern about the reduction of the, the buffer in this area, especially because it currently has wetlands. Using the chart prepared by the developer back in 2016, it shows that this whole area too includes substantial amounts of wetlands. Right now, those would be included in a large portion of that 40-foot buffer. And by removing that, we're now affecting the wetlands and getting rid of some of the wetlands that would be protected by that 40-foot buffer. In addition to that, this abuts Oxford Run. And as shown in this, that initially was an RPA, and there was no development allowed next to it. If they are allowed to get rid of that, then this whole area, which drains into Oxford Run, would be impacted. The other point I want to make is if they have access to this for the EDA, that would probably be developed as commercial. And that would be backing up against a housing area. So I think that affects differently the buffer in this area than it did in Area One. And if I might add, Lamont did say that there was going to be no drainage into this, and I take exception with that. Because if you look at the amended drawings for the new development, there are two large level spreaders that actually have been added into the area that was intended originally for the apartment area. And the purpose of a level spreader is to distribute stormwater runoff by using a controlled slope and over stone, so that it's done in a measured and slow manner. But it does take water and drain it into that area.
I brought it up in the EDA about the buffer reduction. And in the only rationale that they got for signing off on that, or, you know, giving their, they're, they don't approve it or whatever, giving their blessing, was that it provided the right of way. But as Bob said, it's housing butted up next to commercial. And as far as I understand, that's not appropriate, according to Section 8.35 and the perimeter buffer areas, or depending on what you provide, define as reasonable buffer between dissimilar properties. And I brought it up to them, you know, would you conceivably have trouble with your EDA property and having the community push back if you have houses butted up right next to your EDA property? And there was no concern raised at EDA for that.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close this public hearing. If there's no one else wishes to speak, and any discussion or questions that you need to clarify?
My comments, as far as the 40-foot, would be exactly the same as on Section Area One. I don't think it's necessary to repeat it, but I, you know, I, it, it's not germane to the conversation. But eventually, I would like, I think it'd be wise for the city department or council or somebody to figure out how in the heck we wound up with EDA-owned property that's landlocked. To me, that's, somebody dropped the ball somewhere. And we probably ought to go back and look at that. Or somebody ought to go back and look at that. I'm not sure who this somebody is.
Don't do it again. Is that what you're trying to?
Well, that could be it.
Is there a requirement, development to provide an access so that there is landlocked property? Is that part of the subdivision process?
Well, we have a section in the subdivision ordinance that talks about, rather labyrinthine portion of the ordinance. We've had some, yes, I mean, there is policies.
Is it within the ordinance or is it a voluntary?
It is in the. Under alignment of streets.
Is there some sort of grandfather date on that, perhaps? I'm wondering.
Well, I mean, the subdivision ordinance has been valid for a long time. So, you know, it's, it's been in there at least since '92.
It's interesting. Okay.
We have the same ordinance that the CIO for Newport News has, who are probably the other jurisdiction close to us that hasn't updated their subdivision orders lately. So talking about subdivision order several work sessions back, we'll get to it at some point. But, but that's probably need to look at. Probably wouldn't be included, but, you know, right now, the way, and I'm kind of getting in the weeds here, I apologize. But, but the way we interpret a, a street is rather broad, I'll put it that way. So.
Good job. Good answer. I'm Tom. With two women's permission, I wanted to kind of revisit just a little bit of, of what we're doing these modifications. I'm not going to pretend that this is very easy to figure out. I will say that the zoning administrator and myself, it's, I think it's fair to say, a considerable amount of time figuring out how we would look at a modification versus a waiver. I agree that Article 8.4 does not allow any waiver. It, it just doesn't. But if you go back to Article 8.2, planned development districts generally, and this is something we need to sort out. We know we need to sort this out, but, you know, now with legacy going through the process, it's probably not the time. But it says basically, the, the, the regulations of Article 8.2 shall apply to the existing regulations of all planned development districts. And it says, subsequent to the approval of the master plan, any additional waivers, we wouldn't do waivers because the specificity of 8.4 rules out waivers, because it's the more specific of the two ordinances. Or modifications, and that's why we're talking about modifications, of the requirements of the zoning subdivision site plan and site ordinances must be viewed by the Planning Commission here tonight and City Council pursuant to, and then there's sections further down here. And those sections refer to, particularly under the Planning Commission, refers to things that, that you have to be able to find, such as the suitability of the tract for the proposed plan development in terms of its relation to all applicable provisions of the comp plan, physical characteristics of the land, and its relation to the surrounding area, which, I mean, we've been talking about a lot tonight. The relation of the proposed plan development to roads, utilities, facilities and services, talked a little bit about that. Each requested waiver modification included whether the requirements of Section 8.2-2 are satisfied. So those are the specific findings for that. It's not quite to the scrutiny of a variance. But there's no question that these changes are being questioned based on, on primarily financial implications, both in, in, in number of lots, towards the maximum number of lots that they're allowed, and, and, and cost to them. So I'm, I'm not trying to poo-poo that at all. I'm just simply saying that's how we reached our decision that they can apply for these That's clear as mud, I'm sure. But, but that, that's really.
Yeah. Do you have a basis to, have a basis to be able to do that? Okay.
I have one more question in terms of buffer. The language where the buffers may be included, recorded lots, what, what is your intention?
Our intention is to have the buffer on the recorded lot.
On the recorded, included in the recorded lots?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right. We have a motion.
I'm going to move that we postpone voting on this until we have a chance to look at it.
Second?
Second.
All right.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner DeWitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
That motion is carried by vote 7-0.
And now we're to number five, which is a request for a buffer modification to Area Number Three on the submitted legacy of Pecoson Master Plan to reduce the 40-foot perimeter buffer to five feet in order to provide room for the development. buffer to five feet in order to provide room for the development of the commercial space located along a portion of the Victory Boulevard frontage, as well as required parking to serve this commercial space.
Okay, thank you. This particular buffer, that commercial building right there, that parking way in there, basically the parking lines are buttoned to the park. The request is to go down to five feet from the 40 feet. The rationale being that there's simply no room for the parking or the commercial building to go anywhere else but where it is, or where it's shown on the master plan anyway. You know, about the only other thing that they could possibly do would be to go on the second floor of the commercial, but that goes against their views from Victory Boulevard that they submitted as part of the original master plan, where the idea was to have both buildings in the same design in order to build a gateway as you go back towards the fountain right here. The parking, you gotta really look at that. I mean, is there any other place to put the parking? In this case, there really isn't any other place to put the parking. So really, the decision is, you know, you'll be looking at changing the amount of commercial space and the amount of parking required for that commercial space if you don't grant the buffer modification, at least, you know, that's, that's what it looks like from staff's view anyway. But anyway, that's all I'll say about that.
Any questions? Wally, before he sits down.
And to clarify, the property abutting that is R and D, both currently zoned and the future land use is R and D.
Go back to the zoning map so I don't make another good.
Yes, that is R and D right there. That's those commercials, that's R and D.
Property that you referenced, yeah.
And again, you'll notice the Tudor property is not included as the overall development, so there was no anticipation of acquiring that property.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this request.
Again, I'm particularly concerned about the stormwater issues with this particular buffer area because it not only reduces the amount of absorption, which is important for stormwater management, but it also directly abuts Oxford Run. And if you're going to have a parking lot with only five feet between it and Oxford Run, you're going to have a lot of pollutants, there is no absorption at all of any of the stormwater before it goes into, and you have little to no control. If they are planning on doing a 5-foot, I would recommend that it only be the corner where that building is so that you don't impact the stormwater management and control before it goes into Oxford Run.
Wally, can I get clarification based on that statement? I was under the impression that it would maintain a 40-foot buffer up against Oxford Run and that the 5-foot buffer would only be next to the property.
Well, there's a 40-foot buffer shown in this area right here, okay?
And that would be maintained?
That's through the Tudor property, so I believe that we're only, I'll have a couple of clarifications, but I believe we're only looking at this area and this area right here.
That's correct.
Is that right?
That's correct.
But yes, that would be a 40-foot property.
Thank you.
I try to be concise, Natalie Cannella, sorry, when I gave my original statement to include all of the requests that he suggested, but I do have to say I have quite a bit of issues with what Mr. Lamont has mentioned. So I'm not really sure what originally happened when the city in 2015 went from the 60-foot buffer down to the 25-foot buffer. What did he do with all the land that he was giving back that was his property and begin with? That's all on the length of the Victory Boulevard. That was supposed to be for this parking area for the commercial property. So my question now is, Mr. Lamont, what are you going to do with the property that you bought after the EDA bought their property that you landlocked them in? What is your, what is your requirement for your property that you have?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I don't understand your question. Could you be a little more specific?
All right, what land were you obsessed by by the EDAs right now? And their commercial, correct?
Yeah, we're talking about this piece now.
Well, I know that, so what I'm saying is, since you're having all these issues, why don't you?
Ma'am, and I'm not, I'm not trying to interrupt here, but in, right, that really, this is more of a private conversation that you should take up with Mr. Lamont.
Okay.
And I'm sure he'd be willing to meet with you and go over this.
Okay. But he didn't answer the question, though, about the property that they gave.
This is not really pertaining to what we're doing here. We're kind of getting off a little bit. These are private conversations, you have questions of Mr. Lamont.
Okay, well, I'm just, I was just saying that the city gave them the property.
It's a public hearing, but it doesn't mean that you're going to engage in a conversation with him about questions that he can answer at any time for you.
Okay.
And just, you know, this is just proper protocol.
Sure.
Okay?
Okay.
Comments are welcome, but, you know, the conversation here is kind of getting away from what we're doing. All right, anyone have any comments regarding this?
Madam Chair, members of commission, just very quickly, again, this all speaks, I think this probably shows more clearly than anything what the original intent in not having these buffers was, because this project would never have been designed that way. The Tudor property was not available at a price that was economically feasible, otherwise we would have been happy to include it, but we can't be expected to write a blank check for property, so we did not purchase it. And this buffering commercial from commercial is probably makes less sense than any of them. So, in any way, so, like I say, I have a, I have a real concern with buffering residential from residential, but buffering commercial from commercial, I just don't understand at all. So I'll just make that comment.
Mr. Myers, on, on the diagram we have there, it shows an alleyway that is not in the site plan development in Phase One that was provided, which is now requiring this buffer to be requested, correct?
I'm sorry, the alleyway, we just changed this to front loads here to provide a.
Is there still an alleyway behind those properties there that's, no, okay. I have three different diagrams, and I'm trying to get them all sorted out.
This, in the site plan, these are front loads, this alley is not here, however, we do have to make, we do need, in order to meet the parking requirements for 40,000 square feet of commercial, we need this to be, if we lose this parking, we lose the commercial, and the city loses the ill-requisite commercial element, that's what I believe.
One else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing, and commission will take it under consideration. Questions?
I have a question, so, what was the original square footage of commercial?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand, and what would be the impact of the reduced, what would be the reduction?
If we lose all the parking, we lose Ms. Fenwickson, they could be half that. We may lose that whole side.
Because of the requirement of square footage per parking requirement? Okay.
Plus, we couldn't even build the building the way it's shown.
Excuse me?
Plus, we couldn't even build the building the way it's shown.
Okay, anybody else? Ready to make a motion on this one?
Make a motion that we postpone until.
Second? Great. All right, Karen.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner Dever?
Aye.
Commissioner Griebel?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye. Okay, we have reached number six. That is a request for a buffer modification to Area Number Four on the submitted legacy of the Pecos Master Plan to reduce the 40-foot perimeter buffer to five feet in order to provide for a T-turnaround at the terminus of Street A, as shown on the master plan. The 5-foot buffer would be maintained as grass.
Thank you. Okay, this is the master plan that was approved back in 2015. You can see that there's a T-turnaround. What there is not here is a 40-foot buffer shown at the top. So if we move forward with what their request, their master plan looks a lot like the approved master plan, which we're on the case. What's happened is with the imposition of the 40-foot buffer in this area right here, the T-turnaround was originally envisioned to go towards Oxford Run. There's no room for it now unless they lose one or two lots in this area. Now, that is an option, if they lose one or two lots. The reason this turnaround is needed is because these lots in particular have no access other than this particular stubout of Road A. That's what necessitates a need for turnaround. So what they're asking for is, it's almost just a spot to buffer modification to build. There's not a modification of any of that here, only in this area right here, and they're proposing to go up to, what, 35 feet into the buffer, or even 5 feet of buffer to construct that T-turnaround. That's essentially what they're asking to do. I put that right? Okay, all right, good. You know, the reason, and this came out as part of the site plan because our fire people obviously want, our emergency people want adequate turnaround in this area. So really, the question before the planning commission, and, you know, and I know you guys are probably going to postpone this, but it's quite a decision, but the question comes down to, you know, is going up to within five feet okay in this area to provide for the T-turnaround, or essentially, do you want the T-turnaround shown at the terminus of that area right there and they lose a few lots? Which, again, they've already lost some lots, and they're trying to recoup lots back towards the original that was approved back in 2015. That's all I got.
Question, is there an additional buffer around Oxford Run? Would the 5-foot, would that literally be to the ditch?
Well, I know there's some concerns with the other one about the encroachment of development, but it would be, well, that's the outer part of Oxford Run, I don't know exactly where the ditch ends, but, but that would be the end of Oxford Run going back towards, towards the mountains. Right now, there's 40 feet, kind of like that illustration that Lee had us do a little while ago, which I found very instructive also. So you, but you'd go down to 5 feet, so, you know, you'd be looking at.
Yes, as an addendum, there is no additional buffer around Oxford Run. This would be 5 feet from that turnaround to wherever the property line is for the Oxford Run ditch.
Correct.
The property line to the actual ditch, do you know the?
Not off the top of my head, and I don't know if we have a current survey of that area.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and open the last public hearing for the evening, that is on this last request.
I'll just make, make one point of clarification, perhaps of Ms. Emmett's question, that is, it really is, it's basically like a road crossing through there, which has been approved in a number of areas. So it's really, it's like a road crossing, except we're not going, it's just it's for emergency vehicles to be able to, and school buses to be able to safely turn around, that's all.
I think the choice on this one is a little clearer than some of the others because of the encroachment into the area so close to Oxford Run. This would be the end of a road with all its attendant pollution and runoff from stormwater, which would come off without any attenuation into the area so close to Oxford Run. In addition, this would keep the 40-foot buffer consistent along that whole edge, and I think giving up a lot or two with the intent of maintaining the integrity of the stormwater area would be appropriate. If you choose to extend it, I would think you should at least require that there be an upslope to that T so that any stormwater that would fall in that area would fall back down and be collected appropriately and would be prevented from running into Oxford Run. Thank you.
I think we're going to go ahead and close this public hearing. Have any further questions that they would like to ask of Wally or anyone?
Not a question, but I would comment, I don't know the fix, I don't know the fix, but I do agree that some sort of turnaround for school buses and fire trucks and that sort of, somehow that's necessary. I agree with that. Don't know how.
All right, do you have a motion to postpone this one?
Take a motion to postpone number six.
Thank you, Greg. Second? Thank you. Karen?
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenwickson?
Aye.
Commissioner?
Aye.
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 Chairwoman Schreiber? That motion was carried by vote of seven.
Moving on to new business, we have the election of officers, and we postponed this from last, this, tonight, we have a full crew here. We postponed last time because we didn't have very many here, and we will go ahead with that. What is your?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to offer the nomination of Angie Emmett to Vice Chairman of the Board.
And I would be very proud to second that.
Okay, because Bill has said that he does not want it, because his term ends in January.
Just a few months.
Yeah, so he's, he's going to let somebody else take over, it's good. Okay, all right, and then with that, I guess.
I was going to make a motion that we, that we elect the board as one group.
We usually do.
We usually do. Chairman Schreiber, Vice Chairman Angie, Karen, and our assistant. I think we have an assistant.
Oh, yes, Cheryl. You don't have any choices?
Well, this name is listed.
Okay, so if you're not, if you're not sure who's who, we got it, I think it's in here somewhere, Bill. At this time, I may not be, Cheryl Miller is our clerk. So we would, we would have Karen Sarsas-Clark with Cheryl Miller. Deputy. Cheryl's a deputy.
Deputy, yes.
Okay, so is that?
That was my motion.
Your wishes and you second?
No, I made that motion.
You made that motion? Okay. All right, so, all right, so we had a motion to?
We had, so do we need to do a vote separately?
Right, because we've got two.
Because we have a motion from Lee.
Yeah, we've got two motions.
Oh, we made a mo, oh, I made a motion that we elect a group of Chairman Schreiber, Angie Emmett, yourself, and.
Well, why don't?
She made the motion that we nominate. You would just separate it, too?
I don't know, we've got two.
I would probably abstain from that vote, so, but then I hate to abstain.
Exactly, maybe go individually.
You can vote for yourself. Do it all the time. Go ahead. Okay, so what do you think? I mean, we've got, she could withdraw her motion, and could she withdraw and Bill had presented the whole, I mean, I don't know exactly how you want, or, or Lee can add hers and you can second it again. See, she's got a motion.
Motion on the table.
Yeah, we've got a.
And I seconded that motion, I had seconded that motion.
I know it. All right, well, why don't we do? All right, well, why don't we do that separately, and then we can, and then...
You made a motion.
Okay, let's do Lee's, and that way, she's... Let's go ahead.
Can you restate Lee's motion, please?
I nominate Angie Emmett to Vice Chairman of the Commission.
Bill seconded.
Bill seconded, and I think we should vote on this.
Okay, we're gonna do a vote on that. Commissioner Brennan.
Aye.
Commissioner Dever.
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble.
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett.
Abstain.
Commissioner Fenixson.
Aye.
Commissioner Travis.
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber.
Aye.
And that motion was carried by a vote of six to one abstention.
Okay.
And then, do you want to do the other...
Then the motion would be that we elect Chairman Schreiber, Karen.
Commissioner Dever.
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble.
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson.
Aye.
Commissioner Travis.
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber.
Aye.
And that motion was carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, so, that concludes our business, our new business, and we're going to communications and correspondence, if anyone, I guess, Wally, did you let us...
Other, well, I will mention that we did do our second... Did identify a fair number of problems, and...
Okay.
Lots on the PowerPoint next month. But, other than that, everything's going pretty good. Thanks for trying to tie up. Quarter Creek, it looks like you're gonna submit us in a minute. I don't know what it's gonna be yet, but...
Nothing for me this evening.
Okay, just two things. One of them, I, you probably... And if you have any questions, just let me know, now or later. And second thing is, I guess we need to talk about our meeting date and a work session beforehand. Six o'clock again?
Yeah, I think six o'clock.
I think so, too.
And that's gonna be on the 21st. Regular session at seven. Okay. That's the 21st.
21st. October, October.
I was gonna say.
October 21st, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I guess, Kevin, would you like to...
I think the only question I have on the 21st, will we revisit these...
Yes, that will be on our agenda.
Yeah, and I don't know that there's anything else. We haven't received anything that will...
I think we'll beef, we might beef up a little bit of what we give you, maybe take out some other stuff that you don't need, but some other stuff that's kind of relevant to some of the questions that came up tonight.
I have nothing for the Board. I'd like to thank all the... Their comments on this project. I do not take this process lightly. I've read every article I've received up until tonight, and I've got four pages of notes based on everybody's comments, both the Board, the project developer, and the... Gonna be resolved in one night, as you've seen here, and I thank you for staying with us for three plus hours this evening.
I'm good. I concur.
Angie?
Yes, I concur as well. Sometimes you come into a meeting, and you have certain thoughts in your head about how to proceed, or how you might choose to recommend or not recommend, and then absorbing the public comments, again, from the citizens who came out and the developer, and I'm really glad that we had the extra week to be able to absorb that process, so, thank you.
All right. Lee?
Yeah, I'd like to extend thanks to Bill Travis for his service to this commission as Vice Chairman. Bill, I think on behalf of all of us, we really appreciate your role as a Vice Chairman, and I don't know if it's appropriate, Madam Chairman, but if there's any sort of recognition that council, we could recommend to council for recognition for service. It takes a lot to bring the other, and Bill's been a really wonderful Vice Chair, and, again, I just want to appreciate.
Thank you. Then I have three quick comments. Number one, Angie, if I had a gavel, I'd pass it over, but I don't, so you don't get one. Secondly, very quickly, when we, like my colleague here, I'm a bit of a visual learner, and it would really help me if I had a better line drawing or picture...
Something that you could say.
That I could really get a grip on what some of these things are, because I look at this stuff, and I say, okay, but I, it just doesn't, it doesn't work on my brain. And lastly, I promised I'd do this, I think, Wally already mentioned it, but Mrs. Harris was here at the last meeting and talked about the non-conventional lots, and I had the opportunity to walk by her place, and just by coincidence, Commissioner Fenixson was there at the same time, so we looked at it together, and I was really surprised. I'm sure that that property is within the letter of the law, but I don't think it's within the spirit of the non-conventional lots. And I do hope we'll put that on the agenda fairly soon, and see if we can figure out a way. I don't, now, I spent a month trying to figure it out, and I don't know what the way is. I'll leave that to you, wise people, but I do think that's something we can come up with. And that's all I have, ma'am.
Okay, well, I'm gonna certainly reiterate what Lee said about Bill, because he has, anything that I have ever asked Bill to do concerning the Planning Commission, including helping with the comprehensive plan, which was a big job. He readily accepted that responsibility and did a great job. I will miss him, and I will look forward to working with Angie, because she will also, she'll bring a lot to our group, Vice Chair. But thank you, Bill, certainly, and if the council, I would certainly love to see them recognize your service, because you're certainly a faithful member and a faithful Vice Chair. I don't have too much to say, except that I appreciate the comments, I read everything that is forwarded to me, and I really enjoy seeing positive input on situations, because positive affects me a whole lot better than negative. I do want to comment that I did receive one letter, and the last part of this letter I want to address, because it, and this is a negative, and I don't like to bring it up so late at night, but I think it should be addressed, because it alludes to something that doesn't happen. "In too many places in Pecos, and a wink and a nod to developers has resulted in homeowners not being able to get out during even minor flooding because of substandard roads being approved and instructed, and stormwater runoff problem pockets in neighborhoods created..." And I'm gonna say this, in defense, they don't need any defense, but the honor of these commissioners or care that I work with, as long as I've been sitting here on this commission, I have not known of any wink and nod that has ever been made to developers by this commission. And I don't like to, I don't like things like that. If you have evidence of it, bring it to me, 'cause I want to see it, and I mean whole card evidence. It's an accusation that I don't appreciate. So, I want, no, with that said, if you have something to say, you're certainly willing to, I'll take it up with you after the meeting, but I want to, I just want to say that that affects me in a very negative way, and it makes me very unsympathetic to your cause. Lesson one, if you want somebody's ear, don't accuse them of being dishonest, and that's what that is. And no one here, sitting here in any of these seats, is a dishonest servant to this community, and we are servants. One dime has crossed anybody's hand up here. So, with that said, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. No, I'm not going to take this up with you, I'm not gonna take this up with you now. I'll be happy to talk to you about it after this meeting, but right now, we're gonna adjourn, but I just have to make that comment, because when I got the letter, I read it all the way to the end, and when I got to that last paragraph, it really, it really did not sit well. Okay, with that said, the meeting is adjourned. Good job, everybody.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All right.